Join me in the Fledge of the Legits.
To defy of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather Clark, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Moore.
Present.
Councilman McNamara.
Present.
Councilman Niassey. Councilman Pell.
Present.
Councilperson Escuvali.
All right, well, today we have a presentation from Aram Turchunian on the North Sea Beach Restoration Project. Aram's here to give us an update. Why don't you come up and join us? And Kathleen Murray.
Supervisor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you?
Oh, okay, great. We should be joined online by colleagues, or at least two colleagues. Where can I see them? The first is Dr. Ju Sevriyan, who's the Director of Ecology for Vesta. And the other is Doug Edwards, who's our General Counsel. Don't know why we need a lawyer. We're all a bunch of scientists, but, you know.
It was no question.
And, you know, just by way of introduction, my name is Aram Turchunian. I'm a coastal geologist from West Hampton Beach, New York. Been involved in the North Sea Beach Colony Project for about six years now. That project started out as a, and continues as a beach restoration project for 62 homes located on the North Sea Beach to the east of the end of North Sea Road, fronting Pekonik Bay. This board created a beach erosion control district, which the taxpayers tax themselves in order to implement the beach restoration project. We've gone through three or four rest, three or four? Three.
Three.
Three, the initial, and two subsequent restorations. That particular project is doing extremely well. It weathered the big storms we had both last January and this January. And in the, and starting about two years ago, I was approached by a group called Vesta, who are a public benefit corporation that are using olivine to sequester carbon dioxide in ocean water. And this is a natural process where the olivine dissolves in the water and it draw, it enables the ocean to absorb more carbon dioxide from the atmosphere and creates a carbon dioxide sink. We have been engaged in a two-year study of the, of this beach. So the original olivine sand, which is 500 cubic yards, was deployed in July of '22. There was monitoring that began about six months before that. And that monitoring continued up until October of '23, when the, when we had, North Sea did an additional renourishment, which kind of buried all of the olivine sand. And so what we're here today is to give you a report on the two years of scientific investigation, about how, how we did. And if Dr. Sevriyan is on, I'd like him to take over. There he is. Ju, how are you? So Ju is, as I said, our Director of Ecology. And he is overseeing a great deal of this analysis. And just to introduce the subject matter, what we're, one of the two, two key, there's three key things. Number one, is this material persistent in the, on the beach? Does it provide additional protection because you have more sand? Number two, is it absorbing carbon dioxide? And number three, is it having any impact on the, on the environment, specifically through the benthic biota and fish and, and the like? And that is Ju's area of expertise, so I'll let him take over.
Thank you so much, Aram, and good morning, everybody. Now, how can I project my PowerPoint?
I have it up, and you just tell me when you want it advanced.
Oh, okay. That'd be, I like it. That'd be in the case, what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna look at it myself. You can hear me well, can't you?
Yes.
All right, well, good morning again, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here and share the results with you. That's the most important thing we scientists can do, is to share results with people so the results can be used, you know, for something practical and beneficial to everybody. So, as Aram was saying, I'll be talking about, representing Vesta today, but talking about what we have found for this restoration project at the North Sea Beach. And next, so basically, it's three goals that we want to go over. Number one is make sure that we are nourishing the beach, right? We want it to be there, we like the sand, we want to enjoy it. Number two is to absorb carbon. We have a problem with climate change. There is way too much CO2 in the atmosphere. So as we nourish the beach, we also want to absorb carbon. And look it up. And number three, we want to make sure that everything is environmentally safe, right? Because you will see that the mineral we use to absorb carbon also has metals, and those metals in high concentrations can be toxic. The drawing you see here is basically a study design. We have what we call four treatments. To both sides, the west and the east, you have the control non-nourished. That's basically original beach with no addition of sand whatsoever. And then in the middle, you have two more treatments. You have one with the olivine, which we call olivine nourished. And then another one with just sand, poured, which we call controlled nourished. We have taken a lot of different measurements for each of those four treatments, including physical, chemical, biological. This map portrays the sampling stations for poor waters, waters in the sediment, and water column, right? But we have other maps for other countries. The idea here is to look at those four treatments. Next, so what we do in the next slide is briefly go through the different goals and see where we're standing. Again, I have summarized the most important information. For details, we can look at the report where everything is detailed and explained at length. So first goal is, are we nourishing the beach? If the sediment that we put there is staying in place, right? And the answer is yes, to some extent. I mean, some of it was off, but some of it is staying on the beach. And this one you can see in this series of figures. Let me guide you through those. So at the very top, so we read is a bunch of different answers. You can see in these yellow lines, right? And we measured elevation and on those standards, right? And we look at the change in between sampling times. At the very top, you can see the overall change from June 2022 to November 2023, right? And we want to see green, because green is the color that denotes a positive change, now goes an increase in elevation. So if you look at that first plot, that's it. You get the answer. So over the course of the experiment, some of the sediment is retaining the beach, because we see that green color. You see that green strip right at the bottom of the polygon? When you, the four subsequent panels that you see below are basically periods of time, so you can see the different changes, how, you know, all this happened. So the second one from the top would be from June 2022 to July 2022, which is right around before the nourishment to right after the nourishment, right? So you can see a lot of green, because the sediment will go. And then as you go through time, all the way down to the last subpanel, you see that there are episodes of redistribution, of erosion, et cetera, et cetera. That's normal beach dynamics. But the most important thing is that once you put everything together, you add the sums and you subtract the, you know, the minuses or the erosion periods, you still get retention. So yeah, so we are keeping some of the sediment in the beach, which is good. Next, so we should be in slide four now, with a bunch of electron microscope pictures to the right. So let's jump into the second one. Are we capturing carbon? The reaction that Aram was alluding to, the one we are interested in, is to the left. So basically, you have carbonic acid in the water when CO2 and water come together. And then, as you add olivine, olivine is magnesium silicate, the second reaction. When you put that mineral in the water, it reacts with carbonic acid. And the most important thing is that 4HCO3 negative, that's bicarbonate, so that creates acidity and effectively locks up acidity. So that's, that's our C of CO3, right? That's how we absorb. So we want that to happen. We want the olivine to dissolve. And the pictures to the right offer proof of that. Top left, a subpanel is a regular olivine grain where you still do sub edges, right? But then, as the solution occurs, number one, you round up the edges, and that would be subpanel B. You can see how those edges are not as, you know, angular, but they are in the subpanel A. Then, if you look at the bottom one, C and D, in the sea, we have this chipping. You know, I mean, you can tell that it's dissolving and therefore you get these chips, these little crevices, right? And that's the arrow in the subpanel C. And then you also get distribution pits, which is basically little holes, more holes, that are for the solution. And that's the circle in subpanel C, and then the arrows in subpanel E. So yeah, so the olivine is dissolving, which is a good thing. That's number one. Next.
How is the olivine being put into the wire? What's the process?
With payloaders. We take it from a staging area, bring it down to the beach with payloaders, and dump it right into the surf zone.
Right into the surf zone. What's it look like?
It's green.
It's green.
But when it mixes in, you can't really see.
Yeah, it takes about, it takes about two good storms between, before it totally mixes into the beach.
Does it, is it the texture of sand?
It's, actually, the people at North Sea loved it because it's a little bit smoother and finer than the North Shore sand. So they actually really, they didn't care about the color. They just liked walking on it.
Thank you for the question. I forgot to say, please interrupt me any time, and Aram can answer, or can answer, or Egwa or somebody else from Vesta. I think that Steve Romanello, our director, you can speak, and we call him, so.
Oh, good, yeah.
All right, so, so, Aram, we should be at slide five now?
Yes.
Okay. So I apologize, I'm gonna show you a bunch of plots now, figures. Some of them seem busy, but they are not that busy. So let me go through the most important information to Vesta extract from each of these slides. So we're now in goal number two, carbon capture. We do know, we have photographic evidence that olivine is dissolving. And these are the data that father report that. So what you see here, at the very top, as shown, you have four different treatments, right? Non-nourished, and then nourished with olivine, and the controlled nourished with just poured, right? And then the rows are the different variables we're measuring. So the top row is total alkalinity, which is basically, you know, bicarbonate. This thing we want to produce in the water that looks like a CO2, right? And then, the three next rows are metals, right? Chromium, cobalt, and nickel, right? Remember, we don't want those concentrations to be too high, right? Because they mean they're toxic. So let's go through those. And then, what you find also, it's the different, so this is provided in the sediment, right? Which is called poor waters. And all those lines with different colors denote different things. And the legend is to the right. All right, so what I would like you to look at is, this time with the top row, which are total acidity. And if you just look at it very quickly and compare the trances, the measuring stations for olivine nourished, which are T2, T3, and T4, you can just see that those values for total acidity are much higher than for the other three. So good, that's good, that we want to see, right?
That's good, that's good. Just interrupt. That's good, because that, the alkalinity is what we're trying to produce, because the higher alkaline water absorbs more carbon dioxide. So that's the key reaction, is the alkalinity.
Precisely. And you don't mind, since you said that our goal number is like, right?
It absorbs.
More carbon. It enables the water to absorb more carbon dioxide. They like it.
Aram, you said go back one slide.
Oh, go back one slide.
Oh, yeah, you go one slide. So you see that chemical reaction to the left? The second one.
You're gonna get tested on that.
Yeah, you see the, are you in slide four now?
Yes.
Yeah, so if you look at the second reaction, right? If you look at the product, look at the second product, the 4HCO3 minus, that's it, that's what we want to produce, because that's how the CO2 is locked up. So a proxy for this, or a measurement of how much 4HCO3 minus we are producing, is total acidity. So if you go back to slide five.
Good.
See, what he was saying, what Aram was saying, is that those high values, higher values, for T2, T3, and T4, than we are seeing for total acidity in comparison with the other treatment, is a good thing. We want that to happen, this high. Perfect. So we go down now, and then let's look at the metals. And for chromium, which is the second row, we can really see, you know, clearly elevated values for the olivine, nourished treatment. But you go down to the last two rows, cobalt and nickel, we do see slightly elevated values, okay? So you look at those lines, in general, and they tend to have higher metal values than the lines for the controlled nourished and non-nourished treatment. Okay, so what happened there, he will hit a question mark and say, okay, alkalinity is good, but we have some metals that let's you out, right? So let's keep going. Next?
Yes.
Okay, so slide six now. A bunch of plots. And let me guide you through all these parts, okay? I'm gonna steal this part. So what we have saw is what is called the poor water, which is basically collecting water within the sediment, right? Now, this slide is showing us what comes from the sediment up to the water overlaying the sediment. So it's basically diffusing, right? From the sediment up into the water, the open water, right? So we know what is in the sediment. Right now, we want to see what diffuses in the water, right? So let's look at the column on the left. Let's focus. We are comparing a station for olivine nourished, which is in green, station for controlled nourished, which is in orange, and a station for controlled non-nourished, which is in blue, okay? Now, if we look at the values for the two, the control non-nourished, there is a lot of respiration happening there. Like, you can see how the top left, dissolved oxygen is lowest for the controlled non-nourished. The pH is also lowest. Then, there is a lot of DHC, dissolved organic carbon, that is a subpanel to the left, that's because there is a lot of CO2 produced. And then, because there is a lot of CO2 produced, then we look at the last one, total acidity, which is very low. Total acidity in this controlled nourished, non-nourished. And that's basically a lot of respiration. I mean, there is some organic matter, maybe. We just happen to collect quite a bit of organic matter, and we find it. But that doesn't matter for this story. The most important thing is to look at what's going on with the green line here, okay? Which is the olivine. So if we look at the pH, we see, which is the second subpanel to the left, right? In the column to the left. That's good. That's high pH, because that happens with also total alkalinity. So as we have more bicarbonate, we also increase the pH, which is a good thing, right? If we go back down, all the way to the last row there, in the subpanel to the left, right? You can see how total acidity for the olivine nourished is also the highest. Good, so we have the high pH, and we have the high total acidity, right? Which is good, right? DHC is not the highest, which is the third figure in the subpanel to the left, right? Which is probably because that CO2 that is being transformed into bicarbonate is coming from the sediment proper and not from, you know, externally, from the sediment, it's not coming from the water column, or it's coming from the sediment. So if we put all this together now, what I just said is to basically reinforce that we do have a positive outcome in terms of what we want the olivine to do, which is to create more acidity, right? To increase the pH. And now, that's the important thing. That increased acidity is diffusing from the sediment up into the water column, which is a good thing. It's gonna stay in the sediment, it's going to the water column, and overlay there, right? What has happened with it? It's basically being dispersed. It's gonna be in the unit, right? Because the waves move, they are not in the sediment anymore. They're in the water column, but it doesn't matter, because that bicarbonate has already locked up CO2. It has done its job. It has absorbed the carbon, and it's being dispersed in the water column, but the carbon remains taken up. It remains captured in the newly created bicarbonate. So again, putting things together, we have olivine, we have all this transformation of CO2 into bicarbonate in the sediment, then it goes from the water column, over there, it's dispersed, but the CO2 has not happened, it stayed there for a long time. Now, again.
I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing the part where the length that it's effective.
Well.
You know, I see what you're saying, it's a positive outcome with the olivine nourished, but how long does that last? Is that on here?
It's gonna last as long as that bicarbonate remains as such, right? And it will remain as such for a long time, because the water column has the right conditions for that bicarbonate to remain as bicarbonate.
Let me, let me answer that slightly a different way. That chemical reaction is gonna continue until the last of the olivine is dissolved, which takes decades.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, but once created, so that generation of acidity is continuing. It's continuing, it's low, but keeps going. But once, once created, that acidity will stay as such as long as the conditions are right for that to stay, maybe.
In other words, as long as there's olivine touching water, it continues to occur.
Because it's in the.
Because it's in. So just for clarification, I mean, we're so hyper-focused on, on the environmental safety here, is that we first look in the sediment itself, within the water in between each grain. That's what he calls the poor water. Then we want to know, once that poor water diffuses up into the water column, the bay itself, we're looking at that column of water. We actually isolate that column of water. And that's this material that he just described. So it's, the alkalinity, it stays alkaline, but now the metals that we saw on the poor water, they're all diffused. Makes sense, because once they get up into the water column, they move around. The next level that he's gonna talk about is, what happens to the organisms that are laying there on the bottom? Are they picking up these metals? That's what we want to know. Okay, so this is a three-step process to get to, you know, to get to our answer.
Okay, thank you.
Ju, next slide?
Yeah, let me, let me, so yeah, so we just to wrap things up a little bit. This is a continued generation of acidity. And once you have that acidity generated, it stays like that for a long time. So not only do you have continuous creation, but once created, it stays like that. Which is good. Now, let's look at the, very quickly, the central column, right? That's for metals. So if you go down, you see the last one is nickel. So you see how it's, we know that it does accumulate in the sediment from the last slide. So when this one is shown to you, is that it does propagate, it does diffuse into the water column. So we want another question mark here. But the good news is that, as it diffuses into the water column, right? Next slide, please. And slide number seven. So what this is telling you, this table, is that it does diffuse, and once there, as it happens with bicarbonate, with acidity, it does dilute big time. It does disperse big time. If you look at the last row there for nickel, right? The values we just saw in the figure we presented in the last slide was about four micrograms per liter. Here is, look at this, it's less than one. And the most important thing is that it does not vary in between the control and the olivine. And that can be said also for all the other metals you are looking at, right? Iron, cobalt, and chromium. So the idea here is that, yeah, we have creation of acidity in the sediment, also metal, it diffuses in the water column. Yeah, acidity is dispersed, but it doesn't matter, because you already locked up the CO2, and you feel that CO2 locked up. And the metals dispersed. They become disconcentrated, which is a good thing, because the problem with metals is when they concentrate a little bit much. But here, in this particular case, they dilute, which is good. So knowing that, having that background for the geology, there's going to be environmental security. So we're changing goals now. You can see at the very top of this slide, that I went from goal two to goal three, basically, it includes goal three. Knowing that the metals dispersed in the water column, let's look at what happened with organisms that live in the sediment and water column. Next?
Got it.
So we should be on slide eight now, the first one that only reads environmental safety. So again, I apologize for all these plots. We scientists, we love to organize all these plots, but we also like to restore and try to make them as simple as possible, explain them. So what we have here is metal content in the organism. So basically, organisms, right? Whatever, plants, worms, whatever, looking at fish. If they have a lot of metals around them, they're concentrated, and then they increase the content in the tissue, right? In the liver, in the muscle, whatever. So here we have metal content for nickel, chromium, cobalt, and iron. And we have it for the four treatments. The two non-nourished, the olivine nourished, and the controlled nourished in different colors that you can see at the bottom, for different ages. So the important here is that if olivine is having a bad impact in terms of concentrating the metals in the body of the organism, then the green boxes, right? That the big olivine nourished should be higher than all the other boxes throughout. Are they? No, they are not. Which is something we expect, because this is metal content for oysters. So we read, we have this panel where we put oyster bags in all these four treatments, and then we let them there for all this time, and then basically, over here, and then we collected them at different times, and we look at the metal content in the oyster dish. We don't find elevated values in the olivine treatment in relation to the other treatments, sure, because the metals dilute right away as they go through the sediment in the water column. That's where the oysters are. The oysters are not in the sediment, they are in the water column. Therefore, we don't have, even though we put olivine, we don't have no metals to affect the oyster. So that's good. Oysters were clear, olivine doesn't matter in terms of metal being back for the oyster. Next?
Yes.
Where did he put the oysters out there?
When?
Now, where were they located?
You know, basically, just below LoTog.
Along the beach there?
Yep, yeah, just anchored them in, in mesh bag.
All right, so the next two slides come together, the slide nine and CN. Now, let me tell you a little bit about this. So right now, we are not looking at oysters. We are looking at organisms, and that's very important, that live right on the surface of the sediment and right underneath the surface, right? So they're using all these four spaces, where I talked about poor waters, you know, all these little holes and crevices in the center. They're using that as habitat for their hosts. And they can also go out really big in the surface and out. I'm talking about worms. I'm talking about cayals. I'm talking about little crustaceans, little shrimp that make homes in the sediment. So what do we have here? Same idea, we have a comparison of the four treatments, they can sit at the bottom over time, right? And here, we are looking to the left, the number of individuals, basically, count, right? And to the right, number of species. So these are indicators, if you will, of how well a population is doing, right? If you are decreasing the number of individuals with olivine that buy, and if you are decreasing what is called a species diversity or number of species with olivine, that's bad too, you don't want. Okay? We have measurements for before the tour, right? And this is the ones to the left, May and June. And we have measurements after the tour, okay? So before the tour. So before deployment, if you look at the two plots, you don't really see anything among treatment, except because you haven't had olivine, therefore anything should decrease. If olivine is having a bad impact after deployment, in other words, for August, September, and October, and that's by the way, that's for twenty twenty-three, right? You should find that the green box, again, reflecting olivine, should go down big time, should go down in relation to the other treatments for abundance and for reasons. It does not. The green box remains pretty much similar to all the other boxes throughout the experiment. In other words, we don't have any negative impact of olivine for the number of individuals and the number of species, right? And we need to look at twenty twenty-three. I'll wrap that up in the final slide, but that's, yeah, that's the good thing. Next slide.
Yes.
So that's...
Hold on, hold on a second, Ju, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just, I'm not reading this, the one about the abundance and the richness.
Okay, so, so abundance is the number of individuals? And richness is the variety of individuals?
And it went down after.
And, and so what we're, so we're always comparing...
It looks like after.
Oh, I'm sorry, go back a slide. So the, the, May and June are before the deployment? And you can see that, you know, it's, it's, it's a mixed bag. I mean...
It's up high.
The green is higher in May and then in, in June, green is lower. But more or less, it's a mixed bag. You're not seeing, you know, one thing, you know, it's random, more or less. And then August, September, and October are after the deployment. So that, that would, if there was, if the olivine was having an adverse impact, you'd expect those numbers to go down. And they don't. They don't go down. And they're also grouped in tightly. If anything, it goes up in September.
Well, but not, it looks like it does go down. It looks like the green in May, the, you know, the olivine green.
But in relation to the other...
Because when I go, I used to fish that area. Like when I went for 渔 fishing there, along that up and there. There was like hardly any fish there. In previous year, there was a lot of fish.
Well, we, we didn't, this is, this is...
And that's what the fish, that's what the porgies and the tiny blowfish eat. They eat off this, this, the sand fleas and all that kind of stuff, the shrimp.
Right, well, so from May to June, everything goes down. But that's before anything was ever placed on the beach. So that's just a natural variation. Then August, September, and October are after materials placed on the beach. And you can see, for example, in August, all of the values are very tightly together. In September, you actually see the olivine area has a greater abundance than the other areas. And then when you go to October, they're all pretty much the same except for the gray box, which is a little bit lower than, than the rest. So as far as the abundance of organisms, there's no significant change between the treated and the non-treated beach. There's a seasonal change and there's a natural change. But there's no change between, there's no adverse change between the treated and the untreated beach. And when we look at the right-hand side, again, we're looking now at species richness, which is the diversity of species, how many different species are there. And you can see that, you know, from May to June, before deployment, you have a natural variation, everything goes way up.
He made the chart very difficult to...
Yes, thank you.
You know, it's like... If you've got to come to like a, to show the like the average guy, this is, this is like wasteful, you know? It's like wasting all time and the people's time upfront, you know? The amount of money they spent on this, we, the average person should be able to understand.
Thank you.
The explanation does help.
Okay, so anyway...
Someone's embarrassed over there.
So with that explanation, we'll, we'll move on to this, the trace metal concentrations. Ju, if you want to wrap these last couple of slides up quickly, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'm sorry for not being, I'm trying to do my best. But yeah, the important thing is to see that the green box has not really been for that much for the rest of the box. Very quickly now, looking, so we are on the slide ten. We are looking at metal content now. What is that again? The quantity of metals we find in the tissues. That's for all these worms and the clams we're talking about. So we have the four metals, nickel, chromium, cobalt, and iron. We have before deployment, these are the boxes to the left, in the subpanel. And then after deployment, and these are the boxes to the right, right? So we can see before deployment, everything is very similar, nothing happens. After deployment, we find an increase in the mean value, right? For each of the boxes, and also a bunch of points on top of it, a bunch of string points, right? So what this is suggesting is that as you put the olivine, it gets moved into previously non-olivine areas. There it gets picked up by organisms, the worms and clams in these previously non-olivine areas, right? So you see all these string values, then increase the mean value for the population in those areas, right? And as a result of that, we find this result. But the important thing is that those content values for the, any of the treatment areas, right? After deployment, they are not that high at all when we look at what they are. And they are well under what would be considered as worrisome by EPA, right? So, you know, they are not alarming values. Therefore, even though the metal content does increase in these organisms, it doesn't do it to a level which would be worse. Next. Now, this one, I think is a cool one because we're talking about all superatex. Those are also in the sediment, they are buried as well, right? At the organism we just saw. What we have here is metal content, again, for the four metals. Over time, we have three stations. We have one that was controlled with very little olivine. Another one with low, which is the light green. And another with high content, which is the dark green, right? If you look at these four plots, what we can see is that towards the end of the experiment, we have an increase in metal content for the, for the low olivine, the light green boxes, right? And on the very last day, we have the highest values, right? For the control station, right? So it's these black boxes that are the highest. So again, what this is suggesting is something very similar to what we just saw, which is that the olivine is moving. We do have, we do have an influx of olivine in the low olivine station towards the end of the experiment. The organisms picked it up, they increased their content. But then check it out, the olivine moves out, the organisms decorate themselves such that their metal content goes down to basically base on levels. And on the last day of the experiment, that we measured, olivine gets into the control station, the organisms picked it up, right? Which is clear from these higher values in the dark box here, right? So the olivine is continuously moving and the organisms are picking it up if the olivine gets there, right? If it stays, the organisms have these high values. If you move away, there aren't any, the organisms will go down. The value will go down to very base of level. The values, the important thing is that these increases in metal content, when you look at the values, are not that high at all. And well, we're below what EPA would consider as worrisome, right? Or as something that we need to be concerned with. I'm going to wrap things up. Let's go to the last few slides, which I will wrap up in a couple minutes. That's slide two of nine. So all these results do show towards achieving our goals. For beach nourishment, we have seen that, yeah, the sediment is not changed. So that's good, at least through one and a half years of the movement. For coastal carbon capture, yeah, olivine dissolving. And we are treating it on alkalinity, that's good, that definitely is a step. And for environmental safety, the metals released through olivine distribution do not appear to have detrimental impacts on the organisms tested, which is good. Last slide now, please, number fifteen. But we want to fully accomplish our goals, right? And we still have work to do towards that. We still have samples to be processed and information to be generated and calculations to be made, right? To fully achieve our goals. So if we look at each of these, because let me tell you what we are doing now, to fully tackle it down. For beach nourishment, we did all these transsets where we collected sediment. And we are looking at XRD analysis that tells us the percent of olivine. So we'll be able to not only tell how much olivine has been made on the beach, but also how much has dispersed into the, you know, subtitle, submerged adjacent area. Along with that, we are also doing a bunch of hydrodynamics calculations. So not only do we know where the olivine is, but we also understand how it's transported there through waves and winds. So we'll have a good understanding of sediment dynamics and protection of the beach. For number two, we're going to complete the analysis of all these variables we talked about, pH, DICE, alkalinity, from the different compartments or water, the basic food chambers and water column. And that, along with the olivine percent results, will allow us to build a model, that's the important thing, that will estimate alkalinity and CO2 capture for the olivine project that we are doing at NSBC. So that's important. We should be able to come up with the calculation and estimate for CO2, what is called drawdown, which is capture. Finally, for environmental safety, we're going to also complete the processing for some sample. Like when we look at this community structure, number of species and number of individuals for macrobenzos, we need to complete the data for twenty twenty-three. We also need to look at all superatex, riverland road to basically confirm a hundred percent that we are not having the negative impacts of the olivine. And once we have that, we compare the data for fauna, right? For these organisms regarding community structure and metal content with the percent olivine as estimated through XRD. And also we're doing XRE, that's another technique, X-ray for research, to look at the quantity of metals. So that way we'll put it into better and we understand why we're not having any detrimental impact. Most likely because as the olivine moves, we are diluting those metals also in the pore water, they are for, you know, even though they're in the pore waters and they stay there and they're a little higher than in the water column, right? They are not that high anyway. And we demonstrate that when we have the data together. So in summary, that's the last thing I'll say. Things are really coming out well. Things are, you know, coming out as expected. And we'll be complete all this work. We should be able to come up with the value for the carbon capture that we have done with this project and also demonstrate with full certainty that this is environmentally safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ju.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So is the length of, just the, it's confined to the length of this beach?
Yeah, it's about, it's nine hundred feet out of about thirteen hundred feet of beach is where we put the olivine.
So my takeaway from this was, everything worked out great, but I don't remember when we had our little, you know, science experiment and we had the whole conversation about this. The fact that the metals and the EPA standards are being even mentioned, I don't think we had discussed, you know, metals in the water as even a possible concern when we, when we went into this project. And so, I mean, I'm glad it's okay.
Yeah, no, that was, that's a, that's really our primary focus on the environmental side, is to make sure that the dissolution process doesn't injure the system.
And we, and we had, you know, discussed that it would help with acidification and all that.
Right, right.
But, you know, I just didn't, the metals and, you know, hearing EPA standards thrown out, like it just, you know, it kind of caught me off guard.
Okay.
I mean, the good thing is, you know, it serves for everything, is that those values, when you compare them with the EPA, you know, scale, we are way, way, way below what we would be worried about, way, way below. So, you know, and we have those tables, so we're doing fine. We are, we are being super safe here.
So I said, I'm glad it all works out.
Yep.
Was the, was the, you know, the olivine, is it done now? You, you put in as much as you're going to do?
Yeah, we've put in as much as we're going to do. We actually have a deployment that's going to be underway in Duck, North Carolina this spring, probably in May, we're going to do, I think...
They're testing it with like warmer water temperatures?
And offshore, it's going to be in offshore. So instead of dumping it in the near shore with mechanical equipment, we're dumping it offshore in a barge. And that's going to be about six or seven thousand tons.
And why are you doing it offshore? To keep the sand from moving in?
Because we, the sand will stay immersed in water at all times. And that's the key to the chemical reaction.
And you also won't have the surf beating on it, but, so it might not break down as quickly.
Well, no, it's actually, it'll, it'll spread. It's definitely in the spreading zone.
Does that make the bottom harder?
Nah, well, it's one of the things we're going to test. But the grain sizes, one of the good things about the olivine is we actually mill it to the grain size that's on, you know, we do a Bethick sample, figure out what that grain size is, and we put the same size olivine there.
Because I know a bottom where it's not been worked, especially like in Schenochak Bay in western Schenochak, where it's like been no clam diggers or any, the bottom's not been worked. It gets, gets like a layer of stuff and then it gets hard. Then doesn't grow any clams and it's like...
Nothing gets through it.
Yeah, it's like a dead, it's like a dead area.
Well, that's one of, that's one of the things that we're looking at in this, any offshore site. We want to know all those things before we scale up.
Was there a reason we did insert here and you're doing offshore there?
Yeah, because our original concept was that we would integrate this into beach nourishment projects. And we still want to do that, but because we're seeing a percentage of the olivine up on the dry beach, it's a small percentage, but it's, you know, five percent. Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not working.
The wave is bringing it up.
So the object is by placing it in the offshore profile, but still in the active wave profile, it'll spread and stay in the water. Some very small, we, we place it where mathematically the models tell us we're not going to get a substantial portion up on the beach.
Uproift, so it drifts down.
Right.
But I suggest the next time you have a report, ask them to do it where the average person can understand it. Because the people out in TV land is going to, you know, they're going to switch the channels.
Understood and appreciated.
So do I need to just get a college credit for that course?
I think you should get CLE for that.
So what are you going to do, another year of analysis?
Well, all the, all the data is collected. And so basically, it's just a ton of lab work right now where all the things that Ju described are being done by, you know, we have a team of scientists that are working on the geochemists, geologists, biologists.
So maybe we could, at the end of it all, get like a layman's term PowerPoint that we could put up on the website on, you know, what it's done and what it's, you know...
What the advantages are. Yeah, that'd be nice, between the offshore and the inshore.
I, I mean, I appreciate the technical data. It's just I don't, without the, without the, you know, explanations of it all, it's, people are going to look at it and not know what they're really talking about.
Sure.
Yeah, Aaron, this is like, I'd like to chime in here too. So we didn't mention this in the, in the larger presentation, but this will all go into peer review and there will be academic publications. So, you know, they go through the normal kind of process. We can, we can definitely put together a PowerPoint presentation in our slide deck with a variety of, that's our language explanation of what's in science paper. As you can tell, Dusty is a science forward organization. And that's how we operate on a day-to-day basis. So we want to be as transparent as possible in presenting all of the kind of very detailed data to you all. But we can definitely synthesize that through your positions of opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate that because we do have, you know, constituents that are concerned. They don't know why we did it or what we did and what it's going to do. And, you know, there's a lot of speculation on what it's caused and what it's doing. So it would be nice to have the data there, but also some way that they could understand exactly what we did, why we did it, and what it's done since then.
I agree with Cindy, that's a good thing to do, because people are wondering why.
Okay.
Is olivine a new technology or has it been around for a while?
Well, olivine is, is the natural carbon cycle of the earth. Olivine is the single most abundant mineral in the earth's crust. But we don't see it on the surface a lot because it's usually formed and associated with volcanoes and volcanism. So you get a lot of, but the first thirty feet of the Palisades in New Jersey are olivine. So it's, it's everywhere. Basalt, if you've ever heard of that rock, has a ton of olivine in it because it's formed in a volcanic process. So olivine is the way that nature regulates the carbon cycle. Well, the object of our project is to basically what they call enhanced weathering. We're enhancing that process to sequester more carbon dioxide and to increase alkalinity.
And to answer the question regarding technology, the proposal for doing this type of work in the near shore environment has been around for a very long time. Dusty exists to bring evidence through field trials of this, of this particular type of work to public. So that's, that's why we exist. So that's, that's why we exist, is to determine whether or not this is a solution that could be used to positively impact climate change.
Well, I wasn't the clearest person for the layman term presentation, but I, 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 thank you, I did it three times in one month. But at least you know now that the mentality and the depth of the science is there.
Yes.
We can say things based on very, very great data. We feel we're going to, we'll get it next time, so everybody's happy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course.
Well, thank you, Aaron.
Well, thanks very much, appreciate everyone's indulgence, and.
Yes. Bring Pop more next time.
Yeah, it's probably a good idea. I ain't going to go see Dune tonight.
Thank you.
Bye. Bye, thank you.
Thanks, Ju, thanks Doug, thanks Steve.
Yeah, I think we were expecting the, the Arum presentation.
I tried.
Yeah, yeah.
I rewrote the whole thing last night. It said no.
Ah, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any updates they want to share?
We have.
I have to.
Okay.
I forgot to mention this on Monday, in the month of February, the courts had two thousand one hundred and eighty-nine people go through their door, and the total of fines were one hundred thirty-eight thousand six hundred fifty-nine dollars, last month in fines. And I had to walk with Peter, the facilitator, um, person for the town, and he's going to wash, clean up the front doorway, and the front steps, and the back steps, and start cleaning up the front of the building, so it looks a lot better.
Well, there's a, there's, we bonded out, there's going to be a whole renovation.
Yes, he's, um, the back part, the main part where it's going to be painted, and.
The bricks are repainted.
Bricks, painted, and the new windows put in. They're waiting for the engineer guy to come back, and I'm going to be talking to Tom about that, to push that along, so we're not waiting another five years.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks for getting the heat fixed.
Yes, well, the heat's still, we're still waiting for a pot.
I know.
Not exactly right.
But it's something when you argue over twenty thousand dollars, it's, it's bad.
Yeah. All right, well, then I'd move to close the meeting.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to go into.
This is the executive session.
Oh, that's right. And I'm going to rephrase that. Move to go into executive session to discuss.
Personnel.
Personnel.
Let me rephrase, all right?
Aye.